Great, thank you. Great. All right, so I'd like to call a meeting to order of the City of Monona zoning Board of Appeals, Thursday, March 24th, 2022. Obviously, we have a roll call. Do we have any appearances?
Nobody here at City Hall are not associated with the application.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the February 17th, 2022 minutes?
I'll move to approve.
Move to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any changes, corrections? The minutes. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. I'd like to move to item number five, public hearing of Tim and Suzanne Vanderbilt at 4655 Tony Wathata Trail, requesting a variance from the Monona Municipal Code of Ordinances, Section 480, 24D7C4 accessory building in the shore yard for the purpose of building a permanent in-ground pool within the shore yard, case number Z-002-2022. Doug?
I believe we're joined by the applicant via Zoom. We also have his contractor here at City Hall as well.
Right, thank you. Tim, would you like to start us off and tell us about your project?
Sure, thank you. My name is Tim Vanderbilt and I want to thank you all for allowing me to request this variance and apologize for not being there in person. I'm on vacation with my family in California. My family and I moved to McFarland last year after I completed 21 years in the Air Force. And if you're living in 10 states, we're very excited to build our forever home in Monona and raise our two sons and finally get down to put some roots in a community. There are no variances being requested for the primary structure of the house. We are requesting a variance to build an in-ground swimming pool in the shore yard of the property. As you alluded to, the variance is needed because a subsection of the single-family residence district states the only accessory buildings permitted in shore yards are boat houses, boat shelters, boat landings and piers. We were informed that a pool is considered an accessory building, so variance will be required if we wish to build a pool. Just as a point of clarification, there'll be no above-ground structures associated with the pool. We will not be doing a slide, a diving board or any kind of pool house. So concerning the variance decision process, the hardship is really due to the definition of a pool as an accessory building. The zoning code does not restrict accessory uses in the shore yard. The definition of an in-ground pool as an accessory building is a narrow interpretation of the term "building" and many courts have defined "building" as an above-ground structure. In-ground swimming pool would often be defined same as a patio which would be allowed in a shore yard. I think the purpose of restricting accessory buildings within the shore yard is to provide and maintain an uninterrupted view from the shoreline to the residents as well as to ensure that neighbors' views are not being restricted. Because the pool is in-ground, nothing blocking any views, I think it meets the spirit of the zoning ordinance concerning the unique physical property limitations. I acknowledge that my property is not the only narrow lot on the lake, but my property is only 45 feet wide at the street. Current Monona District dimensional guidelines state that a lot front it has to be a minimum of 70 feet. So my property is really 35% less than what's currently allowed for new construction, new zoning. It's for this reason that I'm unable to build a pool in a side yard to keep it out of the shore yard, which could be an option with the standard-sized lot. And the third point, no harm to the public interest. An in-ground pool will not have any negative impact on the neighbors or anyone in the community. We submitted signed letters from the neighbors on each side of the property confirming their support. We've had an engineer review the plot plan and has determined that the pool will not harm the shoreline or neighbors' properties in any way and actually decrease negative impact of runoff. And if a variance for a pool is granted, it will have a secure protective cover that satisfies the accessory structures code regarding this matter. So in closing, several neighbors having ground pools in the shore yard, a home was built down the street at 4715 Tony Wathata in 2015 with an in-ground pool without a variance, according to my recent discussion with the owner. And the city of Monona granted approval for a variance in November in 2016 on Tony Wathata for identical reasoning. And while I understand a prior variance being granted is not in itself grounds for approval, I do appreciate your consideration on this matter and I really believe an in-ground pool is in accordance with the spirit of the ordinance and will not cause any harm to the community. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tim. Would your architect like to, or contractor like to say anything before we move out of the public hearing?
I don't think I have anything more to add to that for the variance.
Okay, thank you. Close the public hearing portion and move to consideration of action. Again, Tim and Suzanne Vanderbilt, 4655 Tony Wathata Trail, requesting a variance from the Monona Municipal Code of Ordinances, Section 480, 24D7C4 accessory building in the shore yard for the purpose of building a permanent in-ground pool within the shore yard, case number Z-002-2022. Doug?
Thank you. I can just give a little bit more background. I think the applicant gave some of the background that I was going to touch on, but I'll just run through these comments here. The pool, again, is determined to be subject to the accessory buildings and structures section. Again, within the shore yard, so any section beyond the house towards the lake. The only accessory buildings permitted in the shore yards will be boat houses, boat shelters, boat landings and piers. The definitions in the zoning section of the ordinance effectively uses structures and buildings. They have a similar definition. You know, they define one as the other. I did confirm this with the city attorney as well, just to get his read, that this was still the case. I had looked at previous approvals. It was before my time, but previous variance considerations. And I checked with him that that was still his read and interpretation of it, and it is. And so therefore, this does need to come through. As mentioned by the applicant, there is a section within the building section of the ordinance regarding pools. And they are only allowed in the railyard or in the sideyard of properties. Obviously, you can't go in the front yard. And then the zoning section, zoning ordinance precludes them in the shore yard as well. So I just wanted to lay those pieces out. And finally, as mentioned, I know in the applicant's materials, they included some reference to previous applications. Just a reminder that is not, you know, approvals are not precedent setting. But I thank them for including that for some context as well, for a reason, consideration. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. The ball is in the board's court for anyone who would like to start us off this evening.
I have a couple of questions. Doug, the first is for you. I just want to make sure I understand. Are you able to confirm that if in fact, Tim and Suzanne were building a patio in their backyard of this same dimension, is it correct that there would not need to be a variance?
That's correct. So patios are not subject to setbacks. If it were a deck, it would be. They would be subject to typical setbacks, but a patio, concrete, you know, brick, something like that, they would not be subject to setbacks and it would be permissible in the shore yard.
So a patio would not, but a deck would. A deck would because it's above ground slightly?
So a deck is treated as a structure and so it is subject to the typical, whether it's primary or accessory structure setbacks. So typically in the shore yard, we'll see them attached. Again, it would run into a similar situation where it's detached. You know, if it were kind of a freestanding deck, it would be accessory building structure and it would be sort of the same position that we are here with the pool. But yes, if it was attached, if it met zoning for the different yard setbacks, then it would be permissible, but a patio is exempt.
Okay, thanks. And then, Tim, my next question is for you. You mentioned that you're going to have a secure cover for the pool. If this is approved, does the cover stick up above the ground?
It's flush and it's electronic, so it'll be secure 100% of the time. We're not using the pool.
Nice. And so, and there won't be a fence around the pool?
Well, we haven't decided that yet. And we won't need one by the ordinances because we'll have the secure cover. So if we do a fence, it'll need to be, you know, one that we can see through and doesn't obstruct the view. And it won't have to be the four-feet requirement that's required around a pool because we'll have the cover. So it's kind of a separate issue and we haven't decided fully yet.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for doing such a great job of submitting your application and speaking to us. I wish everybody did such a great job. And you know, you clearly did your homework and I appreciate you including some, you know, previous cases of this being approved. To me, this seems like a kind of a slam dunk, but I'm just going to stop talking now and see if anyone else has any questions. So thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, as the chair, I would just echo Chris's comments that I appreciate the thoroughness of your application and the way you step through what is our requirement from a state statute standpoint, number one. And number two, I want to say welcome to Monona.
Thank you. Very excited about it. It's kind of my dream. Dreamed, I did my residency at University of Wisconsin in Madison. And this has just been, I've been talking about living on Tony Wathata actually for my last seven years on active duty, you know, and this just opened up and I'm just thrilled. So I'm really excited to become part of the community. My five and seven-year-old sons will grow up there and play sports there and we're excited about it. Actually, they're already wrestling there, part of Monona and McFarland. So really looking forward to it.
Win Davies here. I have just a couple of questions. Doug, can you, just so I'm clear with my interpretation, can you reiterate the language on the setback itself? From what point is the setback start and where does the setback complete? Is that at the meander line? And to the house? So where does that setback at?
So the main thing here would be the yard designation specifically. So anything beyond the house, beyond the main structure is going to be deemed the shore yard. Obviously, anything running alongside the house would be side yard. Anything in front towards the street would be the street yard. So that is really where it is defined, obviously with the shore yard. The meander line is a critical piece for setbacks, specifically for the primary structure. But anything beyond the house here is going to be termed the shore yard.
Okay, all right. So it really wouldn't matter if that pool got turned the other direction or not? Does that matter at all to any setbacks?
That's correct. Anything beyond the house, it doesn't matter. The orientation, it would still require variance.
Okay, okay. So then that's clear. Appreciate that. A secondary question I have. With that, maybe, Tim, you can help me out with this. Is there any part of the shoreline that the DNR needs to get involved in for permitting?
I was brought up at the last variance meeting and my understanding, they answered, the lawyer that had looked into it said, no. Scott, do you have anything to add since you build on the like there quite a bit? But my understanding is we're going to be well removed from the shoreline and the meander line. And so there'll be enough, you know, soil and things and that's not going to be an issue.
We have moved, where the existing house was, we have moved back about 24 feet, which allows a lot more distance between the front or the front of the house and the lakeside. We will not need to get into the DNR with the lake shore. We do have an engineer doing an erosion control plan. And we have an engineer that's, we do have a very steep slope on the other side of the pool. And we're going to try to clean that up and we're working with an engineer that does structural to see what we can do for retaining walls. We're not going to have any, we're well within the scope of everything. Boat house that would go down there is fairly small. It's just a smaller place to keep a few things, not like a real big boat. And the pool is 24 by 16. It's a very small swimming pool, which I think helps with the property there. So.
I just, I think the clarity for me is if there's any type of shoreline retaining wall that needs to be built or structured for the use or the build of the pool itself, I just want to make sure that is clear and precise.
So I can maybe address that a little bit as well. The DNR purview is really below the ordinary high-water mark. So that certainly will be a consideration. And I'm actually talking with the contractor at the moment about the future boat house and sort of the shoreline work that would be part of that project. But as I understand it, this pool is far enough back from the water that it wouldn't fall within the DNR's jurisdiction.
Okay, all right, perfect. That is clear. Thank you. And lastly, so the existing house structure, that will be removed.
Correct.
That's correct.
All right, perfect. Thank you. I apologize. I have one other question. Can you clarify, I just happened to see on the application form, I don't know if this is a typo or something, and the bottom, it says last revised 10 of 2019. Is that the application form itself or is that specific to this application?
That's the application form itself.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, great.
I had a question regarding the the purpose of the zoning restriction. I see in Tim's letter, right, where you're asserting that the boat would, the pool would not interrupt any views of the shoreline. Are there other purposes of the zoning restriction against the shoreline that we should be considering here?
Was that a question for me? Sorry.
For you and any other members of the board?
I think, at least from my perspective, I think this has come up. There was a, I think last year, there was an application for a storage shed in the shore yard, for example. I think a lot of it is for the view corridors and sort of the cross views in the shore yard. Obviously, it's something to be protected. And I think it kind of is interlinked there with the building structure definition. That would be my interpretation of why the, you know, there are no buildings or structures to be in the shore yard by the ones listed in the ordinance.
Yeah, I'm looking specifically at the unnecessary hardship requirement, right? And purpose of the zoning restriction is specifically listed there. And it's, I mean, it's hard, it's hard to make a case for an unnecessary hardship in the other cases, but specifically for purpose of the zoning restriction, it seems pretty clear that the restrictions on the shorelines are to maintain views. Unless I'm missing something.
Yeah, thanks. Ryan, you kind of stole my question there. I was going to as well. But do we know why Monona has chosen to categorize pools and define pools as an accessory?
We've lost you, Brad.
Do we know why we've chosen to define a in-ground pool as a structure?
The audio is kind of cutting in and out, Brad.
Great. Do we know why it's been defined as a structure rather than use?
I am not specifically aware. Obviously, this is something I should have said at the beginning too, that there are a few existing that are grandfathered in and, you know, those are able to to update, you know, and maybe sort of update the structure itself and the use and the intent doesn't need to come through for a variance. So there are a couple that have those. My only, my only guess would be the proximity to the lake. You know, certainly some of the lowerlying areas, maybe floodplain considerations, things like that. But, you know, having a recessed pool closer to those and some of the lowerlying spots of the city may be a challenge. But I think, again, getting back to, you know, the purpose of this, I think the shore yard, the structures or the buildings, sorry, that are specifically defined, I think they are very appropriate for shore yard use. And, you know, that is their intent. But it is something, you know, as I look to potentially review or to clarify ordinances, it may be something that could be brought up to the planning commissioners as a future discussion, you know, to evaluate this.
Actually, a question or two that since Tim gave a great introduction and explanation. And I appreciate him just mentioning about the, not sure about the fence around the pool, Tim. Obviously, we know it's a safety thing, right? Fences are there in place for safety for all people, right? Not just yourself. I think that's always a question that gets raised when somebody has to bring a variance to the table of fences, right? Are fences a sightline obstruction to anyone else and their properties? But then you look at it, is it a very specific safety issue to that itself? Would that be anything we have to consider? If the variance is accepted today and then they decide to put a fence around the pool? That's one question I do have. And then the secondary, maybe it's just maybe a comment about, I can see it kind of opens up a lot of the the structure itself can be accompanied by other structures down the road. I'm always concerned about when someone asks for a variance for a structure of any sort that may allow them to do something different to that structure down the road for their situation such as the question I'm thinking about is specifically, what happens if you decide to put a pergola structure or some type of structure as to lessen the sun area or living space to that pool area, Tim? Is there any, has Rennie talked about that at all?
I mean, there's no consideration for it because I would need to request a variance and then you would say no because it's going to block my neighbor's view. So there's no consideration of that. And as far as the fence, you know, I looked in the fencing codes and it says you can have one or the other. I actually feel like the cover is more secure because, you know, kid can flip a gate, you know, latch open, a door can be left open of a gate. But if it's, you know, secure, this is, these are covers that elephants can walk on top of. So kids can go on, they're very safe. And the last point would just be, my understanding is I can put a fence in the backyard without a variance, without the pool, regardless, just for a dog or something like that. And so I don't want to block my own view or my neighbor's view. Initially, when we brought it up, I mentioned I might have a fence and my neighbors were actually all for it. And so they have a fence on their yard and so I would just continue it. But it would have to be, if we did, it would be a black, you know, kind of a fence that you can kind of see through. And it's kind of a, but probably don't, we don't know. We don't know. It's kind of, in my opinion, it's a little bit of a separate issue because of the other requirements to be satisfied, you know?
Okay, thank you. Yep, no, it does. Thank you.
Any other questions? Or comments? Or motions?
I'll move to approve the variance request.
Do I have a second? Have a second? Any other discussion? Would you, Chris, would you be so kind as to outline the the steps through the three items as per usual motions?
All right. So I'm moving to approve the variance request in order to construct an in-ground pool at shore yard. Sorry, what are the three steps I'm supposed to discuss?
Unnecessary hardship.
Unnecessary hardship. So as Tim mentioned, that his lot is smaller than what would be considered the minimum width of a lot today. I think it was like 30-something feet instead of 75. At any rate, because of that, he can't place a pool in his side yard. So it has to be in the shore yard. And because it's in the shore yard, a variance is required because this is considered an accessory that's not one of the permitted accessories. I can't remember what they are, boat house, boat storage. So that's the hardship, the unique physical property limitation. I already kind of mentioned his lot, the smaller lot. And then this, this is clearly of no harm to the public interest based on the fact that actually it's it's below ground, it's in-ground, and his neighbors have given their blessing on either side. His neighbors have given their blessing to move forward with this.
And to whomever, when, I believe it was you that gave the second, you agree with those that?
I agree with yeah, I agree with, I second that.
Any other discussion?
I would like to see an amendment that no other additional above-ground structures, specifically stating that this is not in approval of any other above-ground structures like a slide, a diving board, a pool house. And I think I'd clarify that the unnecessary hardship is that the purpose of the zoning restriction is more about sightlines here and this isn't going to interfere with those sightlines.
Right. Thank you. Chris, and when can you accept that amendment?
Accepting amendment.
Okay. Okay. So now we have a motion as amended on the floor. Any other comments? All those in favor with the amendment as, with the motion as amended? Say aye.
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 Ryan, when?
Oh, aye, sorry.
All right. All those opposed? Okay. Your motion is approved.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate you taking the time again and welcome to Monona. By the way, I'm only, I'm at 4505 Winnacost. So does that mean I need, I can come down the street and?
Absolutely.
I've just upped the block on Mesa, so I'm not that far either. So.
Both my, both my neighbors, including Bob Barth, right next door, said the same thing.
Yeah, all right. Well, so just keep us on the list for the next pool party.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks very much. I appreciate it.
Is that going to be in the minutes then?
And the amendment, right? You want to get that documented.
I think it's in the conditions of approval.
Sounds good. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you too. Thank you too. Okay, that brings us to the next meeting date.
Next meeting date is April twenty first. I'm expecting an application for that meeting as well. So that'll be back to the, to the regular, I think it's the third Thursday of the month. Again, I appreciate the flexibility to, to reschedule this meeting as well. So that's it. Thanks.
Any updates, discussion on diversity, equity and inclusion?
Nothing from Seth.
Nothing from me either. Any updates on our discussion on sustainability efforts?
I think I would just highlight the update event, but I'll, I'll let a couple of members of the take, take that one instead.
Yeah, is, for those of you that may not know, we will be doing the second annual recycling event at Ahuska Park on Saturday, the twenty third from eight to noon. And that's a focuses most particularly on electronics, but also styrofoam and, and you ever received a postcard already in the mail, you should be getting one soon. And there's been numerous posts on sustainable Manona as well. Terms of what's accepted and what's not. Chris and I were both there as volunteers last year. We, we, we worked with a company that does all the recycling, can't have batteries or light bulbs in whatever you bring to onsite, but it's a, as last year, it'll be a, a touchless event. You pull, you, you literally pull around with your car full of old electronics and the volunteers accept those electronics from you to be recycled. So it's very COVID safe. And that way, last year we had over two hundred cars. More tube TVs than I ever imagined still existed in Manona. And and the recycling company says usually year two, the, the volume is twice that. So we're expecting a big, big turnout, but if you're, for any reason, you've collected goods, it can be appliances as well. Again, there's a full list of what's accepted and what's not at this event. You go to Sustainable Manona, Facebook or the website, see his website. There's also posting there. And we're happy to help you clean out your basements, help you with your spring cleaning and support Earth Day. It's a great event. And if you have something from Apple in particular, Chris is really good at pilfering, taking the Apple, Apple stuff out of the recycling bin. So I'm sure he'd be happy to do that again.
That reminds me, I should recycle the broken iPod that I took from you.
Yeah. Yeah. Anything else this evening? Great. Well, I thank you all very much. Wish you all a happy and healthy, happy evening and healthy spring as COVID seems to be taking another turn here. And and stay warm. And dry. Yeah, thank you.
Bye bye.
Bye bye. Sorry, formal motion to adjourn.
I still move.
Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.